Okay. I motion to accept the minutes for March 4th, 2021 as written.
All in favor?
Aye. Hey, the town received the monthly reports of the fire and police departments for February 2021. The town, through the Board of Selectmen, will conduct a performance hearing regarding their ongoing community development block grant programs, future projects under consideration, as well as the town's current FY 2019 CDF programs will be discussed. The hearing will be held on Thursday, March 25th at 6:00 PM at the Shepherd Municipal Building.
Can you stop there for a second, please?
Sure.
There might be a lot of people interested in that. Grant worked on a town, different neighborhoods.
I'll definitely return for that one.
This was supposed to have been taken based on the weekend after, but it was technical issues with the whole same thing.
Okay, we'll go down downstairs.
We tried, didn't we, because it just didn't work out.
Yeah, he was.
Hey, the town received a letter of resignation from Mark Richard, Vice Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Richard's hope is to stay until May election, which would allow for two open seats to be filled. Interested candidates for the Board of Selectmen have until Thursday, well, Tuesday, March 16th to pull nomination papers. Please call the town clerk, Nancy Lowell, for information. Their openings on the Warren Cultural Council. Interested candidates may contact Diane Banfield via email at J D B A N F I E L D at M S N dot com. Warren baseball and softball registration is now live for the 2021 spring season. Please see the town's website for more information and the link for registering. That is it.
I have to move back to number three. Why? They're trying to hang in there till the next election so we don't have to.
I've been in this situation where there's two board members, it doesn't work. But it's really, I just would like to claim this is basically, I have health issues that I I have been involved 21 years, I think.
We're looking for two people interested in running for board.
Yeah, thanks for your service.
Also, Priscilla, could you put number four up on our website, Cultural Council or volunteers, it looks like, so. Get it up on our website, so.
And if I made Mr. Chairman on number five, you know, one of those annual things you have at the meeting is I have a little, that just roll over every year. One of them was the $500 we gave to each of the things. Obviously, we didn't take care of that last year because of the situation. Because I know we had a lot of employees that were. Obviously, there was no money in this year, but as the day after the May annual meeting, there money was. And it's hard to believe. We have, people have always got, will continue to do.
Also, there is money in the trust fund for baseball. Yeah, so Don, you may want to look into that, see. Just for baseball, right, but at least get it out there so they can get equipment and stuff that they need ahead of time. We need to wait while they wait for the town to have this, hopefully it's more money.
But that money will be there at first. We are sure that they will get there. It's a small, but that's what they do, they just replace a little bit of equipment here and there and insurance.
Gets the kids outside, gets them a little bit of competition.
Money well spent.
All right, next slide, we have on the agenda is Fortin, Garrett Fortin, full-time police officer from part-time. Well, expected. He suits the guy. Talk to them all right now.
So I'm bringing Garrett Fortin today to. You're doing a great job. He also has agreed to our terms of going through the academy and, you know, three years after graduating.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, anything you'd like to say?
I'm just looking forward to continuing to serve the town of Warren full-time capacity. I know I've definitely enjoyed my time here part-time already and looking forward to helping out some more.
Very good chief, very good lieutenant.
I also brought him so I could introduce him to the town.
Well, that's right, he hasn't been introduced yet.
He hasn't been really properly introduced.
Nope.
So also, this is Lieutenant Early, he's been doing phenomenal jobs since he came aboard.
Do you just want to sit in front of the laptop so everybody can see you out there too?
This is a new thing.
Yeah, the zoom is different. But I don't mind if I take this up as the.
Good.
Good distance for him.
Good evening everyone, I'm James Early and I'm your new lieutenant. Really happy to be here. I'm thankful and appreciative for the opportunity to be in a leadership capacity. I just hope for the best and kind of provide the best service I can for you. I'm down-to-earth, I'm open for suggestions. If anybody wants to come to me, talk to me about something, I'm open to it, so. I'm here, I'm open to questions if you guys have any, but I'm really happy to be here.
What would people expect about being here, say, coming through town and stuff?
Right now, I'm jumping from a couple of different shifts, so I'm either day shift seven to three or 10 to six, but I think my eventual role is going to be straight three to 11. Anytime that they see me, they're free to bump into me and ask me questions or whatever I can do to help.
Very good. Congratulations.
Both very good people. Seven years I've known Jim, but many years he was with Field, Michael Field, and Jerry. I'm pretty aware of him, so.
Jerry hasn't seen us run yet. Good judgment.
Thanks, sir.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Great day out here.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have map number 11, lot number 47.
We didn't appoint him.
Oh, I'm sorry. I signed it, we didn't use.
I motion. I, I motion to accept Garrett Fortin as a full-time police officer for a term of three years with the Warren Police Department.
All in favor?
Aye.
Officially welcome now. Hey, back to the agenda, map number.
Got all the signatures, so he's good.
Lot number 47, Brimfield Road. Gift versus refusal. We did the lot plan and whatnot on this. We get an idea where the location is. I mean, as a town, we haven't been in the real estate business, we have enough buildings here that we're trying to maintain and stuff, but not maintaining other pieces of property. I know it's a gift, but it's not usable land, I mean, we can't, you know, use it for conservation, hiking and stuff, it would just have to be put aside.
Pay taxes.
And we pay tax.
We have to provide insurance for that property too, because it's town property, right?
If we take ownership.
So it actually costs the town money to take possession of that land that we can't use.
I mean, if we could make a conservation area or hike trails or something, a public use area, I probably think about a little bit deeper, but I don't see. I'll be right now, the beavers control it.
Yeah, it's underwater.
It's underwater, so. They seem pretty happy, they've been there for quite a while, I expect them to leave anytime soon, so. That's my own personal opinion, entertain any discussion.
No, I looked at it also, and same thing, you know, not much we can do with the land, we can't use it for anything, any development, we can't really do anything beyond maybe bird watching there. And to be honest, you could do that whether we own it or not, because nobody's going to be able to develop it, it's non-developable. So. I don't see a need for it.
No, you know, I've been, I've been around here, we have never, in the past 20 years, accepted this. Board of Selectmen is not in the real estate business, and again, it's underwater and the beavers are there, and if you gentlemen have ever dealt with a beaver issue, they have.
They have more rights than we do.
Yeah.
It's horrible, so I appreciate the gesture, but I don't think I'm going to start changing my name, but we've never done it in the past, and I don't think we should start doing it.
I appreciate the offer from you.
Very, very generous, but thank you.
Very much, but at this point in time, I don't see the time in my position to accept the offer, so.
So, do a motion then? I do a motion not to accept the property on map 11, lot number 47, Brimfield Road. Yep. That's my motion.
Yeah, that's it, I just put it in the minutes as right of. And I will second that motion, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Board of Selectmen Annual Report 2020, well expected.
All right, it looks good. I would motion to accept the Board of Selectmen Annual Report for 2020 as written.
I'll second that motion, good job.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Right on number eight. Super Guru Motor Vehicle Class II License Renewal 2021. I'm all for local businesses, I don't see any reason why we would deny that.
It's just a renewal, right?
Renewal.
They're not adding anything, nothing else, right?
Nice having somebody that. Super Guru, he does work at town, he does work where? Works for fire department.
He's an.
He's helped, he's helped Adam with. I have no questions whatsoever. He works on my wife's car.
No, I consider Chris an asset to come.
Always done a good job for us.
So?
So, that was a.
Did you want to open that one, the discussion, to anybody, or?
Anybody, retirement concerns? Take a motion.
Alright, I'll motion to renew Super Guru Motor Vehicle Class II license for 2021. Aye.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome. Okay.
Okay. There's a discussion with consultant on town manager administrator.
It's you guys, right? Perfect, so we have a laptop set up there, if somebody wants to come up, either one of you, and start it. Okay. You want to introduce yourselves?
Sure, my name is Andy Sheen, I'm the town administrator for the town of Middleton, Massachusetts, and I'm a member of the Mass Municipal Management Association's Form of Government Committee. Happy to be here tonight to talk to you about town manager and town administrator.
Thank you very much, sir.
Well, just a little background, I mean, you heard earlier. One of our selectmen is resigning. My term expires with me, and I don't intend to be. I don't feel I have the time to dedicate to the town that needs to be dedicated to the town or to make things run appropriately. We also have a board that changes every three, every year, really, somebody has to rerun or vacate seat. And I just don't think we have the horsepower in our part-time position, it really drives some of the change through that we need to change, so. That's my curiosity in the position, is to get somebody stable. Leave the town where it needs to be, hopefully the town where it needs to be, and basically boots on the ground on a daily basis. Mark tries to do what he can, he's here, he's a retired individual, both myself and David work out of town. So we basically spend our evenings doing town business, during the day, we're doing our day job, so. We're not always totally accessible, and I think it's a disservice to the town, so that's why I'm curious of what. I don't know. What our options are, advantages are at this point in time, and how we can move forward.
So I'm happy to dive right in. And, you know, I think the biggest benefit is that you've got the continuity that you mentioned, or the continuity that you're concerned about. Town administrator or town manager provides that continuity, provides that connectivity between all the disparate groups in town, whether it's elected officials, appointed officials, lawyers, boards, committees, who data. And it's, you know, a single point of content, and you know, and it's, and what communities are finding is that it's, it's hard to manage a community with volunteers like yourselves, no matter how well-intentioned, and what your, your individual or collective backgrounds are. It's, it's a lot to ask, and the requirements keep getting more stringent, the demands keep keep growing, and the, and the challenges become greater, and I think my thought is that you have a, you have a better chance of moving forward, wherever it is that you want to go. We always have to be moving forward, and you have a, you have a better opportunity to do that if you have professional.
I think one of the questions we have also is, is a lot of question whether the difference between a town manager and a town administrator, and what would probably best suit us as a small community, because a town manager is a big position to have, and from looking at it, it looks like a town administrator would be something we'd want to go with to start off with. Do you guys have any insight on that?
I'm starting, generally if you want to jump in. I assume, I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know a heck of a lot about Warren, so I assume you don't have a charter, and so you don't have, you don't have that structure that, that would, would be laid out in a charter. And so you can easily create the position of town administrator. More difficult, if not impossible, to create the position of town manager without charter. I would suggest that you start with a town administrator, and then over time, look at how that's working, and, and maybe, maybe it's also time for a charter commission, a charter committee, to look at your, your entire form of government. And I'm not looking to put anybody out of work or, or change the the means by which committees are, are created or seated. But as you, as the community grows and, and dealing with the forces from outside and inside, it may be that the way that things historically have been done doesn't work that well anymore. It may be they're not broken, maybe they just can be improved upon.
Yeah, if I can just add to that, my name is Charlie Blanchard, and I run Sturridge. My municipal experience again, on the Water and Sewer Commission in Sturridge for 11 years, and then 18 years as a selectman. And I became the first town administrator in Paxton in 2005, and then most recently, I retired from the town of Palmer as the town manager. And as, as Andy said, it is, you know, you're putting out, the big advantage here is having somebody there day-to-day to really follow on the wishes and the policy and the direction provided by the Board of Selectmen. As you mentioned, as Andy mentioned, I mean, there were certain ways to do it, and I think starting out, I mean, every selectman has the ability as a chapter 41 to delegate as much of their authority to somebody if they want to, generally you start out with an executive secretary, and, you know, you move that into a town administrator, and then it depends on the amount of authority you want to give that person, that becomes whether it's a weaker town administrator or a stronger one. But the basic thing is, you want to have the person have the ability to hire and fire, at least to the point of making the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, so that you have the final approval, you know, you don't want to have people go on individual selectmen and say, I'd like to get this job, I'd like to get that job. You know, you certainly want to have the control to be able to say, this is who we want to hire, as soon as you agree with the police fighter, the police, you know, she makes a recommendation, you know, you approve it, so that's, that's a big part of it. The other part of it is to have, you know, the town administrator have the ability, at least put the budget together, you're someone who wants to still work with your, you know, finance committee and so forth, but you want to start with the town administrator having the ability to say, alright, what are your goals for this year, where would you like to see our budget go? And then try to come up with that work as the prime heads, and then have the, you know, the work with the finance committee, so that, that becomes, you know, the big thing, and another part of it is, as far as the difference between the town administrator and the town manager, you know, the administrator is generally the chief administrative officer, he's handling or she is handling the day-to-day, you know, stuff on an administrative basis, and you're still the executive, you know, body. Once you get into a town manager, then the town manager really becomes the chief executive officer. Now, in Palmer, Palmer's actually a city form of government, they started out with a town administrative act, I think around, I don't know, you know, early 2000, maybe late 1990s, whatever, but they did go to a town manager, and that changed completely, because it got rid of the town meeting. It's a town manager, town council, form of government, to the form of government. In that case, the town manager really plays the role as the Board of Selectmen, he has all the authority of the Board of Selectmen, and the town council becomes a legislative body. And, I mean, it's more efficient, because basically you don't have to wait for a town meeting, you can really have those decisions that a town meeting would make, at any particular meeting, if it's on a, you know, public side, so forth. So it becomes, I think, a very efficient form of government, for a town to sign a, a warrant, and even Sturridge and, you know, these kinds of, I think the administrator is probably in the best position, is, as Andy mentioned, you know, you can go to, for example, special legislation, you can have a charter. When I went with Paxton, they had an executive secretary, and they decided to have a town administrator, and it was basically just a job description that they gave the town administrator, they kind of laid out the responsibilities of the job. So basically, you know, a different Board of Selectmen could change that a little bit, they could say, oh, we don't want you to do that anymore, we want you to do this, yeah. But sometimes that's the way you have to do it, to, just to work in, so that people get the understanding that it can help certainly the efficiency of the operation of the town, and also, the Board of Selectmen really aren't giving up any of their authority or their power or why you're elected to really set the direction for the town. So I was there roughly six years, and when I was there, you know, I functioned basically under that understanding that it was my job description that provided what, you know, the responsibilities would be. But I think it became clear that they needed to formalize that, and so what they did is, they went and had special legislation. While I was still there, we did have meetings with a study committee that came through and decided how much authority they wanted to give and how they wanted to do it. But that would be a good document, it's on the town of Paxton website, and it is really the special legislation that they adopted, I think probably in 2007, 2008, which now sets that position into, you know, a formal legal position that, that the authority that is vested in that position stays in that position unless they do something to change it. And actually, we started it, you know, based on the special legislation that Spencer had had, although they called it a town manager, it was still a town manager under a, a town meeting form of government, but they kept the title of town administrator, and that special legislation basically just, you know, put in writing what those responsibilities were. And in that case, they had a very active and strong advisory committee or finance committee, and they kept a lot of the authority for, you know, the final decision-making on the budget with that thing, so there are things you can do within the your decision, want to make for special legislation, but, you know, right now, you know, under Mass criminal laws, you have the authority to establish the position, the biggest thing would be, obviously, putting in the funding for it, and then making clear through a job description, you know, what it is you want to have this person do, I think that would be the important thing.
We're about to lose our meeting in one minute here.
We're losing it.
We only got 40 minutes to do a meeting, because we don't have the pro, so we're short.
I think people can dial back into this.
A rule and regulation at next.
You guys, what's your, you know, we have to go on the floor. Our annual meeting, service to public, you know, is something that they would benefit from in the long term. What's your role in getting us ready for that?
We find some discussions about how can you write the job description prior to the search committee, when we're actually out there looking for somebody that you're on the process. But I guess, what's your role in getting us to the position?
I think we could help with the, with the job description, getting a, getting a job description from a, you know, comparable community, you don't want to, you don't need a job description. You don't want, you don't need my job description, which I have a, I have a, my title is town administrator, but I have a lot more authority than you're probably looking to create here. But, you know, there, there are communities like Warren that, that would, would have job descriptions that would be, that would be a reasonable jumping off point. In terms of, of helping you recruit, it's not something that I'm able to do based on the code of ethics that, that govern my, my position. Effort of, you know, meet with you in, in venues and discussions like this, it's just not appropriate for me to, to participate in the, in the selection. I don't know if that's different.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, one of the images really, we're really here, it's more or less, you know, kind of a sonic word is by, you're giving answers, I mean, you know, the Form of Government Committee is really just a bunch of, you know, managers and administrators that, you know, we have these subcommittees, and we try to do, you know, support this form of government, because we're in your favor. You know, we can't just have like, available organizations like that.
Where we have the budget together, we have to see where our, where it has to be. Still in the process of pulling that data together, still pulling articles together, see where this thing's going to be.
Right.
We had a rough year this past year, because basically froze everything, we had some corporate enough money last year to keep the town now running, so we weren't able to invest a lot into the town over the last year, but we were able to keep it.
I the same person that was there as you know, the like the person so. I mean, it's it's just that um. That that decision can come later on is whether you want to get into the special legislation or the charter. Um, I think it's unlikely, you know, town, you know, on the side of really. You don't want to go to the 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 power from the government. The power is almost thirteen thousand people and it is really, you know, a small city full of government. Um, but I I do think there's an awful lot of um. Room within the whole idea of of what you have structured down to get. The kind of responsibility for the town administrator.
Cause I I, you know, I I do would like to make sure, you know, I don't think it's it's always intentional.
Right, no.
Right, it's and as Charlie says, that's that's a longer term decision.
Everybody here that's already here.
And what I've seen in my career, having worked as a town administrator in in two towns of about ten thousand people is. Often you get to the point where those elected officials are approaching retirement. And you look around the community and the first time that I was a town administrator in the town of Townsend. The collector was elected. She was approaching a, you know, her retirement and. It was pretty clear to us that there was nobody in town either that had the qualifications to be the clerk. Or they had the qualifications and the desire to stand for election. Not everybody wants to to be elected, go through that process. And so that's often the trigger point. And um, and in the community I'm in now in Middleton, uh, we have an elected town clerk, works really well. She's a, she's an accomplished town clerk, she's experienced. Uh, probably as she gets closer to retirement, we'll start to look at that. And decide whether it's time to make that appointment position. But there's no rush to to do that, certainly no rush for you to do to do any of that here. It it really is. A lot of it, it's mostly going to be status quo, except that you're gonna have, you're gonna have an additional desk in the building. There's a lot.
That's the way I would.
Important.
And I have to say, we have probably the best town clerk in any town around here.
I have to say second, I have to say second best because my clerk could be watching and I don't want to get my clerk.
So I am getting some questions here. And I don't know if we exactly went over, because I was trying to get through the technical problems here. Well, there's this just one question, it kind of relates to, what is the difference between a town administrator and a town manager?
Um, there can be vast differences and there can be, there can be uh, no difference. Historically and in the very general sense, a town manager has more authority than a town administrator. As Charlie says often, the town manager is the chief executive. And so the board no longer, no longer is the chief executive, the town adminis- the town managers. That's uh, very much a generality. There are a lot of communities where the uh, the title is town administrator. But the level of authority is is the same or greater than many town administrators. So it depends on your, on your local structure. And for the most part, I think for for a town mani- for a town administrator to have that kind of authority. And I'll, I'll lean on you a little Charlie, I think there would have to be a charter that creates, yeah, creates that structure.
That would definitely change. But you know, within um, the formula of how to.
Do you guys turn the laptop over towards me?
It's really kind of a relevant thing as far as of level of responsibility. The one big thing.
Thank you.
For the time being, when it becomes a chief executive officer rather than administrative officer, that's a pretty big step as far as responsibilities. Authority of signing for anything that they can serve, decisions that don't go to the board of selectmen or case or to a town council. But other than that, within the realm, it is just a title. And a lot of it has to do, you know, so much with just the relationship that that person has with the governing body. I mean, I'm only recently back on the public government committee, it's been a few months ago, but years ago it was on it. And we used to, you look at different communities and say, wow, there's a community that's really run well. They must have a terrific talent, they must really have, you know, something they're doing right. And you look at it and it was not the end of it, it's almost like, you know, the the board of selectmen delegated that authority, but. The board and person do their jobs, they do their role, they hit it off, and it becomes a well managed, you know, town. There are others, you know, that you'd say, well, you know, this one is terrible, they mustn't have any kind of role. And and they had a great talent, but people weren't paying attention to it. So so it actually comes down to the individuals, both in the governing body and the people you hire. So I mean, just the idea of, you know, we have an administrator, we have an administrator, that's not such a big deal is what your role really is. The manager, administrator know what his or her role is and and you know, moving forward down there. Now we have a lot of people, the town employee, department head, volunteers, electeds in the room right now.
I just have one, but I'm getting um, hearing that um. There is no willingness to grant an authority and not really a move that could be made. So it really depends on how much authority you're willing to grant to this person, because otherwise, it seems like a waste of money. So it really has to be a decision on the board of selectmen is how much authority they're willing to give up. In terms of trees and, you know, this stuff, that does take a lot of time, because if they're not willing to. And then those, you're still going to be leading this like.
Well, I I would think racially, yes, if you know this.
Product of the past. Board. Wouldn't start the process to sit here and say, well, we want to hire somebody, but we're not going to give them. We we are trying to move forward. Not sit here, hire somebody and then handcuff his his hands, it makes just no sense at all. Just me personally, that my person.
I have things I'm good at, I have things I'm not good at, I'm not a professional in doing town government. Professional outside of town. Some of the stuff I have to research for town is very difficult to get my grasp of. Personally, I've heard it from board members, so I mean. This is a town's form of government, how they want to continue on, right, so. An elected official, such as myself, is a selectman, really. Depending on how I. Put myself forward is whether I'm maybe reelected or not, if I even decide to run. You know, so I think that with selectmen, even though they may not have asked, need to start. I mean, we have people in positions here in town, running departments, that are quite capable of doing this, right? They should have to come to me, like a selectman, you know, to make their day to day decisions. If there's a big issue, fine, from the seat, get old and, you know, ready. But for the day to day operations, it's kind of, they should know basically how their department runs better than I. I can give some guidance, but it's really, I'm looking for. Information from them, help me make the right decision and actually make the decision, so. And well, enough about a little bit now. So that's the way I I look at it. And that's how I would look at it if I was to vote for someone in that position, certainly. How are they gonna deal with the different departments, how are they gonna deal with personnel in town, stuff like that, because. I mean, this, they're under a lot of restrictions and dilemmas too on. Making sure that they treat employees properly. They're also our residents and our voters, you know, so. It's uh, you know, I see it as a position where. You know, the ultimate decision may be based on board, whether they're gay or hairy, but the day to day, such non-major, non-critical stuff. Has to happen on a daily basis, right? You can't wait for myself, David O'Meara, to get an answer, and I try to answer maybe those. Text messages as often as I can and as fast as I can, but sometimes I can find out the meaning of the word, I can't.
But I would think, you know, the the biggest thing is selling it to the tax people.
I agree a hundred percent.
I I always think if the board is gonna come up, that it's gonna be very well explained. What this person's job responsibilities and authority is before the taxpayers make that. Because of exactly a raging concern, well, if you're gonna hire this guy, that would have to be spelled out because that's part of the selling it to the taxpayer. Hey, listen, this man or woman is gonna do this, and he is gonna have the authority to do this, 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 this.
So grants, that condition typically blocks the grants.
Yeah, grants are.
To buy a person, and right now, we don't have anyone in our town really that is designated in a position to seek in actively to block their grants.
And and grants are part of it, um, Charlie mentioned H R. Our H R issues are are a big thing, they've been an extraordinary thing in the last year of COVID and associated with COVID. Um, and um, and so that's a, that's a big thing. Um, procurement, just making sure you're following the steps, um, and that you're you're not, you're not missing steps along the way. And um, and then this is sort of the. The stuff that's easy to fall through the cracks, you know, that that they can help uh, an elected board or an appointed board. With a procurement issue or with an open meeting law issue or or on the breadth issue. There's a lot of that that gets missed when you don't have a chief administrative officer of some sort, no matter the time. So a- as Charlie says, there may not be. You know, if you pay the person eighty thousand dollars, they may not get any, they may not bring in eighty thousand dollars to be granted. But there may be other efficiencies and other improvements that they bring in that are hard to quantify, but it has value.
And that's a really good point, and you know, lately, grants are getting hotter and hotter, you know, the grants that I was involved in mostly. Being a time, the grants that you're talking to, on the complete part, kind of grants, it's certainly in your health. You got a community development, so there's a lot of community development funds. Brentville, I know, has a community volunteer committee that pretty much, you know, gets the community development rate. So I wouldn't rely on, you know, grants to be something that's gonna pay this position. Another way to look at it is, you know, you've got, it's in the section, it's a, you know, it's a, you know, so. You hear that, I I I worked, you know, with the previous one before when I was working in Promont, right, on some things like the regional document and stuff like that. So you understand what that position is, the authority that person has. And what you're really doing now is putting somebody in there who's gonna take more of the responsibilities that you have. And, you know, work with that person, rest of the town, you know, people who go through it. And sometimes it's a small thing, like, for example, when I was first in Jackson. The idea was, all right, you know, I would do the interview and so forth, they would do the hiring. But it gets funny, we realize that, you know, before we go through and I worked with, say, a highway superintendent and we interviewed some people, we say, we want to bring this person in. You want to be able to be at a point where selecting to say yes or no to that person, but you don't want them to say, yeah, you know, that's a pretty good guy, but, you know, so and so's product called me. And I talked to this one, so I think we ought to hire this one. That's the thing that kind of takes away the authority from this position. So I mean, you want to be sure that, you know, the person has the hiring, firing responsibility, subject to be approved by the board of selectmen. You want to make sure that the person is really putting the first budget together, you know, to, and it doesn't have to be that, sometimes other towns don't do that. But having the person be the one who's bringing this forward. Failing to review by the primary committee and ultimately, you know, by the board of selectmen and by town meeting. But you want people to recognize that that position is really making the decisions on a day to day basis. Based on what, you know, direction he or she gets from the board of selectmen. So when you're looking at something that really has some authority, i- is really, you know, he and she says, this is what I'm gonna try to get it done with the board of selectmen, that's the way it is, so. That's where a lot of, I think, the authority comes from, just the idea that people realize that that person does have. So let us look at a sample organizational trend, for instance. And look at our structure, we have our police, highway. Taxes. All these different things. We were there at that level, yeah, at that level, uh. At the time, it'd be, you know, a normal situation would be the selectman. Below that would be the town administrator, and then below that would be all your department heads.
I think so.
And they would, well, so the town administrator is basically. Between the department heads here and the selectmen in most cases. Yeah, that's really, you know, that's certainly the best way to do it, and. Everyone in those departments has the wrong responsibilities, the wrong expertise, and and they're the ones that know how to do the job. What's the administrator will do is be able to help them with any issues that come up, any cross election that comes up, any finances that they need some extra guidance on. And it it really becomes a position that's helping that person manage, you know, the department. Um, based on data and experience, the town administrator brings. It's not to say, you know, you're never gonna be telling the police chief how you gotta do something. Police chief has the responsibility to navigate the department, but if the person that election comes up, they have the ability there, he has the ability. To work through the town administrator to get this thing resolved and, you know, day to day basis before a decision actually made to the board of selectmen. So really, I I think it improves, you know, the overall management capability of a lot of department heads. That's something you did, they can rely on for a resource to provide a level of of management experience and expertise to help them solve their problems. And that's a big part of it, really.
Yeah, um, yeah, I have a study doing, fifteen years ago. About what? She was just elevated in her position, the town administrator.
By who was that?
Frenchen.
Oh, over in the.
Watson, and 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 she she says it was just a matter of authority. They they gave him more authority and they elevated her position. And and I have mentioned that in the past, the question when she was here, and I said that to the selectman, I said. It's, you work, sometimes you want to work your way into this, into this authority. It's not always about just creating a position, it's having someone hold your crown and giving more authority to that person, this will be this.
I think it's a good step that I actually. That was what I thought, that is, this meeting, you can't stop process unless you start the process.
Exactly.
Pretty helpful.
Sure, I'll make a motion to have Mrs. Dupre continue with uh. The issue we discussed tonight and go to the point back for that that same issue.
Second that motion on favor.
Fine.
And one thing I'd like to ask was, oh, if there's any, whether the audiences that would like to help with that. Also, you can always use help, so uh, reach out to board of selectmen's office, Priscilla. She'll compile a list of names and see how we get this going. Very much appreciate your time.
My pleasure, thank you very much.
Did anybody else have any other questions? Thank you very much, guys.
You're welcome.
I'll be in contact.
Next on the agenda, discussion of parks and rent, we get in driving style movies, I don't have any questions around, so. Let's see what you have to say.
All right.
Did you, yeah, please.
Um, so I'm Sue Ramsey, and I'm here with Lisa Boucher, we're both on the Parks Department. Um, we've been trying to think of public friendly things to do, and. Um, we are pretty much on our end, would be ready to roll with this type of idea, but we um, need your help. And I don't know if this will help, um. We basically outlined the logistics and been looking at where would the appropriate place would be, um, and guess what, it's here. We would like to propose or ask the permission to do these movies on the side of the Shepherd Building. Um, over on the accessories, text collector.
Is that what you were doing over there, looking at the building?
Yeah.
I thought you were gonna paint for us.
No, um, we actually did a trial, um, I think I, I don't know if I, I think I took it out and I have no idea if it um, came out well, but um. He did a trial on the side of the building, it's on your, it's on the third page of your um, handout, um.
Do you have another handout?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So um, that's where we would like to do it, um, we would like to do it on Friday and Saturday evenings, not every week, we haven't really come up with a frequency. Um, how it would work, this is where we need approval, I would think. Um, we would like to secure a twenty by forty foot tarp on the side of the building that we would um, put up and take down for the movie. Um, we would need to either remove two to four screens from windows up on the second floor. So that we could actually do that, we did a trial out of the boys bathroom window that had a big few rip in the screen, so we were able to hang a strip out, see if it would work. Um, uh, we would um, also like to install several masonry um, eye bolts. So that we could secure the bottom of the tarp, so it would be um, relatively flat. Uh, we could project onto this screen, we just purchased a new projector, um, a really powerful projector, um, just for this pur- purpose. Um, we also purchased, um, we just this evening received FM broadcasters, so we could be, we could protect the um, sound into vehicles. Um, um, we would plan to have a defined number of parking spots, and we would plan to have people register um, for each movie event. So that we would know exactly how many vehicles were coming, and we would um, be able to, you know, keep control of that. I did put this in here somewhere, it's probably further down, but I don't know exactly because we did not, um, we, we've kind of been moving kind of fast. Why don't we? Let me just go right down the the list and then if you have questions. Um, we would plan to um, rent a sand can, so we could have a bathroom facility, um, we would monitor and clean it between people. Um, people would be expected to stay in their cars, we would want people, um, at this point with COVID, um, putting lawn chairs out or anything like that. Um, down the road, with COVID not a problem, we've been totally fine with people out on the lawn. Um, to do this legally, um, we do, we will incur a cost for royalty fees for every movie shown. Um, it does range from three hundred to six hundred dollars per event, and it depends on the movie you're seeing, you're showing and the licensing company it falls under. Um, we are hoping that we could offset this tar- this cost by charging per car, um, or and or for concessions, and that's also depending. If it's under one licensing company, you cannot charge, but you can do concessions, if it's under the other licensing company. Um, you can charge and you can hold concessions, it just depends on who owns that movie and has control over the rights. Um, we are going to speak to, I guess, about budget later tonight, um, and we're seeking a solution for online scheduling of events and payments, um, which will. I have other info and it's probably for the next discussion. Um, but that is how we'd like to um, go forward with um, being able to um, plan for those movie nights. Um, because of COVID, we would um, pre- we would pre-sell, prepackaged snack packs prior to the event, so when people signed up to come to the movie. They could also choose to pre-purchase um, a snack pack that we would make up, um, over safe wise and all that. Um, as cars check into the vent, event, we would hand out those, so they would, we would say, oh, yep, you're on the list, and you ordered three snack packs, here they are, go park. And um, so that we would not, we would have minimal contact at this time. Of course, if people wanted to bring their own snacks, they could do that, they don't have, wouldn't have to buy our things. Um, we would plan for tracks to be carry in, carry out, um, and but at the end, we would all, obviously, um, the Parks Department would check the grounds to make sure that there was nothing left behind. Um, and the last thing that we could think of that you might need to know is that um, parking, um, for the event, we would plan to have um, only one entrance available to come in, so that would be off of High Street. Um, we would block off, we would have people come straight by this side of the building. And go down around the back of the gym to park, and we would basically block off so people couldn't drive in front of where we have the screen. Um, we would close that back entrance gate until the movie was at the over, and then we would let people out both directions. Um, does that, anybody have any questions?
Maybe generally, yes, I love the idea, it's just that I don't know if this is the appropriate location for that. Yeah, pretty narrow. Egress, egress areas, yeah, so. If there was a problem, how would we get everybody out quickly, number one, right? Number two, the parking lots and stuff aren't in the greatest of shape.
Well, we would be part, we would plan to, we actually did a trial, I don't know.
I'm just voicing my concern, that's all, yeah.
I just want to address your concern, but go ahead and get more.
Building itself is relatively old, and I don't know, putting holes and anchors in the building is really real wide, all right. Have you investigated the elementary school, high school?
We, I, we have looked all over town.
Much more room.
The reason for here, I can tell you is is many, um. First of all, we thought, we thought of Dean Park, we'd love to do it at Dean Park. But in order to project so that you can see from cars, the screen needs to be, um. Six feet, the bottom of the screen needs to be six feet off the ground. So for us, that would mean we'd have to erect some sort of poles that were at least thirty to forty feet high.
That's concerns, but, you know, I I go way back with movies, so, you know, I've always been adamant to order a plot. I used to take movie night and all over. That's the difference that makes one. I followed the precious, I went to everyone in the movie. This is something that, you know, just support, I'm all in favor of, I'm like, say, you know.
Yes, as far as the anchors.
I'm all for it, that's just one.
Okay, I guess as far as anchoring, I mean, certainly if we can have access to, right now, those screens, I don't know if you're aware, they don't come in and out, so you can't just pop a screen out. We would have, you would have to allow us to cut out, you know, either a section of a of screen, enough to get a rope out. Um, so we could hoist it up, I mean, versus anchoring, you weight it down with sandbags, something.
I I just put a half dozen.
Oh, we would definitely not put it in the brick, we would, we would put it in the, you know, in between the joints.
One small anchor, that would be the overhang for the, of the bulletin, you know, and the scientific, but, you know, it's a little masonry people that talk. We're not gonna do major construction people. I wanted to secure something.
Right, we just would want it so if it was windy, that the, that the tarp did fly around.
That's one of my concerns, yeah, is that we have to secure a town building. And if something happens, um, liabilities to afford, I guess, there's always a percentage of that.
And and I I don't, I guess I'm not clear about what you think might happen.
If that's come through, most of the time, things are a couple, kids walking.
Well, I mean, if it was super windy, we probably wouldn't be holding the movie, first of all, um.
Really, nobody would be walking around because.
And we plan to have, well, we plan to have that front part, people aren't gonna be walking right where that screen is, you know, where the tarp is anyway. I I mean.
Uh, I mean, I understand where you're going, and I kind of like the idea, it's just how we get there from here, right? We can't allocate you any money right now, because we have to put it up for a lot of time.
We don't need any money, we have everything ready to roll, we just need your approval to say, yeah, we can do it here. If you say no, then we're gonna have to figure out how we could possibly do it at Dean Park and not interfere with baseball and softball. And erect some sort of structure, and we probably have to save a lot more money. Right now, we have everything we need.
Good question. Chief, do you have any concerns with this at all?
We're not planning to block any of that, we're planning.
Chief, do you have any concern?
I don't think so right now, we're calling people in, have parking the cars, right, see the, if they're not running after them, we're gonna try to get out at the same time.
Um, I mean, we certainly um, have the access to cert usually because Jimmy's on the cert, and. So we usually have, you know, the ability to have that, um, we would plan to, um. Similar to a real movie theater, to direct people on how the flow would go, um, after, when, at the end of the movie, before the movie started. Um, we would have that either in movie form or just FM system we have, we can actually microphone and say whatever we want to the. People right in their vehicles on their radio station.
And we actually thought the meeting was maybe downstairs, so some of it was set up downstairs, our, our new producer, the FM radio station, everything, just to kind of present that to people as well.
I I personally think it's a great idea, and I applaud you for taking the initiative and stepping up and thinking out of the box for the residents.
We are trying this year, we are trying.
Thinking for the residents and everything, and I I understand Mr. Mason's um, concern. But I think, I think. Um, but I think, I think it could be done safely, you know? Um, yeah, I, I just would be concerned about any alterations to the building or anything. Making sure that, you know, those can be fixed when done to put them back. So we don't have like, you know, issues with the building later on.
I mean.
But I, I think it's a great idea.
I, I think there's two ways. I mean, for us, we, if we had access to getting out the window. I mean, we certainly, because we did it the other night, we certainly could hook the tarp on, hoist it up, anchor it. And, you know, in two or three places, um, I think without any difficulty. Um, if we needed to not alter screens, um, then if we had some sort of bolt with a pulley, we'd be able to hoist it up that way. I mean, I think those are the only two things I can think of, unless you can think of something else, Lisa. Um, we certainly don't want it to face any part of the building. Um, but we feel like it was, as far as like winds, like if we erect a couple poles and have to hoist it up, I can see the wind taking that much easier than something that's flat up against the building. So that was our rationale.
I think his concern is that it's safely insured, so if somebody can come forward and suppose to be, how would we do it safely? We, I don't have to reach out to insurance there to make sure we can actually do it and have that, you know, people here at the building and.
You know, I definitely would anticipate no more than fifty cars, but yeah, like I said, we didn't measure with a tape measure when we did our movie trial. It was dark and cold. Um, but I, I, I don't think that we, you know.
Are you just gonna say that?
Correct. And we're not planning at this point. Now, if we get to the point where we can hold things like at the park. And there is potential to buy a portable movie screen and we've looked into it, but it's like twenty-five hundred dollars um for us to do that. Um, it would be nice, but it's a lot of money on top of what we.
This is twenty-five hundred dollars is something we're not using frequently.
Well, we might do that, but we don't have any idea if we will get mobs of people wanting to do this or not. And so we've learned over time to not sink in as mu, you know, we can not sink in a lot of money on a screen right now, not knowing.
You know, we've also found other ideas out of media drive to bingo. We can do bingo. We're trying to think of things that are COVID safe. You know, granted, everything now has been drive through, like the night, the scavenger hunt, we'll have an Easter event. The movie will be driving, everything, people are in their cars. Um, you know, we've looked at other things to do as well. So I mean, it's not just the movie night, but it would also be bingo. There's other things that we do.
We felt like we could do some other COVID.
With this, this system.
You, you ladies have to think positive.
Oh, we will, but these are things we could still do in non-COVID times. But then we might let people sit in their lawn chairs versus have to, have to be in their vehicle, you know?
And I would think that would probably be the choice of most people. I grew up going to the drive-in. I'm an old guy. Most people don't understand what a drive-in is for.
Oh, we were there.
It was a right of childhood.
You're not that old, Mark. You're not that old.
It was no service, driving there. I just know the share in this and that. That was one of the highlights of growing up. It has a part of the trunk. Oh, no. You know, we went, you know, we, when you have five kids in the family, you don't have enough money to go to the movies. This was, oh, there is a Kool-Aid, bags of popcorn and sandwiches and that's how.
We, we did, we did do a survey, like Lisa said, um, to people that had attended, that participated in our like the night um event. To ask them if they'd, you know, be willing to pay small fee and all that, you know? And I think people would be willing, uh, what the, the result said was that would be willing to pay up to, you know, like ten dollars a bar. Uh, they're willing to buy, you know, if they were gonna purchase a snack pack, you know, they, they thought, you know, that would be great. You know, we gave them some prices and they, you know.
When I grew up, most of the younger kids never sat in a car. They're on the roof, they're on the hood, they're on front of the, it was, those two kids are, that was part of the whole thing of going to the drive-in. Sturridge used to have a playground. They encouraged people. They used to be fifty kidding. Once a movie was done, everybody would bolt in. This and that was just, it was a very nostalgic and, and.
Totally agree with you. I went, I used to go in Palmer. Metro Drive then.
That's right, very much so, girl.
So, I mean, I guess we just um are asking for your approval and if you're, you can't give us that. Um, you know, if we can jump over some hurdles, what, what are, what are they? And we'll try to do it.
Well, that facilitated budget. I, I think one of the biggest concerns with John is to see what our liability, our insurance.
Yeah.
Is that? We, we get right there at first of the week, next week.
I'll be in tomorrow's.
Would that be any different than our liability if we held it at the park? I don't understand. I guess we hold events and things.
It's just, I, I know John has a concern. Let's get the, the question answered.
Okay, that makes sense.
I would think that would dictate whether we go forward or not. I'd like to also hear from Jerry and Adam too, if they have any concerns. You know, like, I mean, are we gonna have to put officers during the events? I have the same concerns about drinking here as I do by Dean Park, so, you know, if people don't want to drink, they could drink.
I wasn't thinking of people drinking in their, in their car, John. I was thinking of like kids in the woods kind of thing.
Yeah, with me here, it's a lot more dangerous. Roll down this hill of the river that it would be, you know, fall down the grass at Dean Park. I was just, I mean, I just want to keep an open mind and make sure that we get this nailed down. You know, I would support it a hundred percent as long as we're doing it safe. Yeah. Let's get those questions answered, John, then we'll.
The other question was.
I think the idea is great. Don't, don't, don't get them running pressure tonight. I think it's a great idea. It's just that can we do it safely?
Any other question was, how is it gonna be anchored to the building? You have?
Well, that's.
If you can figure out how you're gonna do that, I think.
Well, I think like Mark said, just, we were just thinking of little eye bolts that we could bungee it through or tie it through at the bottom. Um, just so it's not loose.
Exactly. Go into the, the mortar joints or the bottom of the building and it's solid.
Right, because we were thinking the mortar joints, but I'm not a mix.
I, I don't see that as a big issue. Well, just look at it. There's a big sale on the building, the side of the building, right? It's gonna collect wind.
Well, the goal is to hold it against the building so it doesn't collect wind. That's.
Guarantee. But take a look at it. Okay?
I don't know if it's gonna have people hiding or you're gonna get the.
I don't know. The answer to the question, that's all.
Well, we, we're not totally opposed to having, we've had plenty of things on Dean Park, but in the spring, it's very wet because of the North Street Hill. Um, so I think it takes a lot longer to dry out. Um, we probably have to do it on that side. I would think, we looked, we walked, we went down there and we figured that the best place was on the North Street side to do it. As far as staying away from the ball fields and stuff, um, which would mean that we probably couldn't do it for, if we could erect something that would hold, um, a, a tarp or, or we sent a lot of money to purchase a portable, um, screen. That, um, you know, we'd have to do it on that side and it just, um, we probably wouldn't be able to hold movies till, you know, late June into July. We're hoping that we, you know, that we can do something even sooner. People are itching to do things. This would be a, you know, we think a great thing to do.
So can I make a suggestion? I'd say, figure out how you're gonna actually attach it to the building, what bolts you're gonna do, what, what anchors you're gonna use. And then maybe meet with us in the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean.
We could do a trial run out those windows.
And see if you can actually do it.
Well, our issue, we could, we could definitely do it because we, but our issue is we would need to, right now, we can't get out the screens. So for us to lower a big tarp, we, we, we took a what, what, what would you say that tarp was, twenty-five by thirty? And we folded it up to be like a panel, because that's the only access we had out the window. Because there's one window that has a screen that that's big, huge rip in. Um, so if we had access, we could, we could have hung the holes type tarp out. We just couldn't do it because of access. Um, so if you said.
And there's no way those screens can lift out?
No, they're like permanent spring.
Be careful with people up on the roof, you know, windows.
No, no, no. We weren't, no, no, no. You, John, you're way up on that. We weren't out a window. Literally, these windows, you know how these windows work? They come out like this. You can't get out a window. We literally put a rope out and snaked it down, tied the, the thing on and just pulled it up.
Personally, I mean, if it was to cost be twenty-five hundred dollars for a screen to alleviate some of these issues and some of these questions. I'd be more apt to, to support something like that than to put any of our employees and people at risk. So if, if that's what it costs us to do it, I need to know that, right? And we need to know as a board. And maybe our shift would be to support something like that where you could take it down, you could move it, you could put it wherever you want to put it, you know?
The other issue with this whole drive-in movie, these, these licensing companies, you can do it in one location. You cannot go from here to there. They won't allow you to do that. Um, I talked to them all, out in California. They don't get what Warren's about, but I talked to them all. Um.
I need some more information.
Okay. I guess I just.
Man behind them.
I guess I'm just in disagreement. I don't feel like it's a safety risk, um, but that's my own opinion.
It's fine. I disagree. I mean, it's, it's good to disagree because you get all the cards on the table, right? So.
So what would you like from us? You'd like to know what kind of eye bolts we'll use?
How you would actually attach it to the building and then we got to figure out if we have, we can use it via the insurance. If the insurance says, hey, no.
She'll reach out to insurance and find out if they're covering for Maya and make sure that we're aware of anything that may come up, right?
Yeah.
Can you, can you all maybe look at how the screens work? Because for us, we would not have to anchor at the top if we could go through windows, because then we could just tie off to the inside of the building. Do you understand what I'm saying, Mark?
Yeah.
Have you talked to, have you talked to Jim in the pesky?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Well, he had some.
I don't really.
So I, I just have a comment about, about the, uh, screens. I have a screen that's been out in my office since the day I came.
Yeah.
And nobody's been able to get it back in. So I cannot open that window for air. So I understand into frustration with the screens.
That's exactly what I was talking about because the only way for me to put that screen back is to frame out a roof. That is why I haven't done.
Um, the screens that we would need to use it to actually have access to, um, would be, um, we could go out that boys bathroom window. Which is already out with that, which not, was not us. Um, and then it would be, um, I believe it's the firemen that have a storage room. And then there's another storage room up there. So they're not offices that are occupied by anybody that's, um, working during the day.
Anything? I think, yeah, figure out how, how we gotta get it done and go for that.
Okay. All right, so, Roger.
Oh.
You're up.
We're just waiting.
Come on up.
Um, our budget, basically, we wanted a level funded budget. Um, oops. Sorry. Um, it, with an additional five hundred dollars, um, because we are really seeking to be able to automate online. Um, some scheduling, um, payment for activities, that kind of thing. And so we, in our request, um, that we handed in to Priscilla, um, we asked for five hundred extra dollars for that. I had researched, um, and, and used, um, a, a system called bagaro dot com. And so I spoke to them and it is about roughly five hundred dollars. However, when I talked to Dawn after submitting, I found that she thought, um, feels that that would, this would not interface with the town well. And I can't answer the financial parts of the reasons for that. She could answer that for you better. Um, so I've done, we've gone to do a lot of research. Um, I believe the town uses Unipay. That's what Dawn is hoping that we can interface with. Um, and, um, the, so we found another one, but it's a lot more expensive. Um, it's more comprehensive than the initial one that I found. So I, I can give you copies of these if you want, but, um, basically, um, the cheaper one that I found that does not interface well. What we were looking to do is, um, be able to, um, schedule. So basically, people would, would be able to pick up and say, oh, they're holding a scavenger hunt on this date. Um, I would like to sign up for that. Um, it would allow us to do waiver and liability forms, um, and a registration. And then it would, this also allows for credit card processing. So you could pay to do the activity online. Okay? The copies do come out, but I think my computer might have been running out of a little bit of ink. But you can read it. It's just you can't see all the color graphics. That one I, and I have used this, um, long story, very, very short, but I, I was taking a tap dance lesson in Sturridge. And this is what they use at the, the fitness company. Um, and it's advertised as a beauty and fitness, um, uh, software. But I called the company and he said, oh, we have all kinds of people using it. It's just what the category we're under. Um, so a lot of like, um, fitness companies use it. Um, so ultimately I did some more research to see what would line up with Unipay. And I found a company called myrec dot com or software, I should say, called myrec dot com. Um, and if you go on their website, and I'll do this as well. Um, it will, it does not give, list a price for how much it costs for a small department. So I called and I spoke to their representative there. Um, this is a twenty-five hundred dollar cost per year. Um, it is even more comprehensive than that other program I was talking about. Um, and I found some local places that use it. And so, um, Belcher Town uses this. This is off of their website, but if you go to their website, it, it looks much more pretty and colorful. And, um, but it'll give you an idea of what you can do so that you can have your program. It's, it, it includes a, a. Okay.
You want us to do it now, Lisa?
I'll try to go fast. Anyway, this, um, i- if you go to the Belcher Town, um, website, um, recreation department website, you can find that, um, they do everything. It, it basically is their webpage. They can advertise all their programs. It has a scheduling component. It has a wage pay. It does line up with Unipay. Um, I called and spoke to their recreation director, Kyle DeBo, I don't know how you say his last name, DeBo. Um, and, and asked him how, you know, how, how it worked. He said they have had no issues with it. Um, they're allowed to offer a lot of things. Right now, when we offer an event, with the little stipend we get per year, um, we spend a humongous amount of time running off papers and, um, collecting mail and opening and getting checks and trying, it's a ton of work, um, we spend for these events. If more of it was automated online, we'd be able to offer more and have it be a little more automated, um, so that we could just do more. Um, it would also allow us to maybe recoup some of the cost of the, like, if we do do these drive-in movie type things. Recoup some, um, costs by charging us, you know, small fees. So we would like to, with our, in our budget, we're asking anybody's budget, allow us to have that twenty-five hundred dollars. We did not initially because we put the five hundreds thinking we had to do that. We could do this Bagaro one, but it, not knowing it didn't line up with municipalities.
All we're gonna do is once we get everybody's information together, then we'll see. Cause we, we're going to talk about the details and stuff. When we get to that point. First of all, we have to understand where our spending's gonna be. Where, where the spending's being requested, right? So, so we're at our total financial number, right? Then look at any articles we could support on top of that. So it's going to be a little bit of a process coming up still. So I don't think we're, we're not in a position right now to make any decisions on where we're gonna spend the money coming up to share or what we're.
That's fine. I guess we just wanted you to be aware that we know, we know now that we are asking for something that's a little bit more.
I would just say, put an amendment into your budget right now, get it in the Pusola show, she can share it with, uh. So Sue, you're looking for the five fifty that you have listed here, plus the twenty-five hundred?
No, just not, not looking at that five fifty at all, just the twenty-five hundred mark. Um, it would allow us, right now. Um, it would allow us, right now, we basically, for a lot of things, our scavenger hunt, free, because you know why? Not because we couldn't have charged, but because, because we don't have the time to chase around papers and checks and it, and liability forms, it takes a ton of time. Summer recreation every year, I, we put in countless hours, making sure we have all that stuff, um, you know, and photocopies. So the swimming instructor has a copy of the liability form and we have a copy and it's a lot of work. If we could make this a lot, a little more automated, we would never want to charge, um, townspeople a lot of money for events. I think historically, we have been super conscious of making things available to, to people in town. But we would like to be able to recoup a little bit. Um, the scavenger hunt, every team had to use a flash drive, but we had to buy all those. We didn't recoup, so we really lost money by doing that event. People had a great time, it was awesome, but we couldn't even break even. So if we were able to bill or charge people small fees for activities, um, we could at least try to break even and do it in an efficient way. That make sense?
It does.
Thank you.
I, I just have one question.
Yeah?
Dawn, were you able to, um, see that software that she's talking about? Is that something that's gonna work with you? The twenty-five hundred dollar one there?
So I did know about John Wood's, uh, the national, um, but, um, I, I know that it has the capability to interface with Unipay, which is what we use for, um, our internal payments as well. And we have a relationship with Unipay. Um, so as long as we can put the Unipay, I'm comfortable with the safety and security of Unipay. And they are in a portal, um, so that's relationships that are like, I do know Tantasco also. Unipay, I just don't know how their online portal works. They do have the capability for their summer programs to sign up. But I don't look back on that.
Right, on our end, we really want, um, not only the scheduling and the signup, but we want the liability forms and the payment. Um, and this looks like it, it would fit all of our needs. Um, I did, when I talked to the recreation director, I asked him, how much work is it? Because, and he said, basically, once a week, he looks at, if they're running events or activities, he looks at, um, I guess he just compares what you get for the Unibank statement with what, um, the myrec dot com says should be there. And they just reconcile that on like a weekly or bi-weekly basis or whatever. That make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You wanna take a break in fifteen minutes?
Good time to take a break. Uh, Lisa, I think they have to change up the DVD. So Lisa, if you're up there, take the opportunity.
I'm gonna end a Zoom meeting so we don't run over again. And then I'll start up in fifteen minutes. So everybody got that? I'm gonna start it up in fifteen minutes. So at eight o'clock, I'm gonna start the Zoom meeting again, okay? Um, and we'll see that we're gonna take a fifteen minute break just to allow WCAT to switch out their tapes. Okay? So I'll see you in fifteen minutes.
Thank you, Daddy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's gonna end in ten minutes anyway, so by the time we come back.
Yeah.
Well, I feel vicious. Every year, and every year, the step increase, well, it gets after years and years, and you just stop. And haven't done it since, we went seven years and then we got one six years ago. So it's been six years since the last customer.
We understand where you're coming from. We'll be supporting you in Depper once we feel, realize how much money we have. So it's like, let's get all the numbers together. What's gonna keep the town running? And what's gonna compensate the other people? Doing whatever they can to keep the town running. And we'll talk in, as a big bucket on that, so. And I think, I don't think there'd be anybody that would be disputing that you're overdue, so. So we're not gonna go into detail about that, I'm more concerned on your operating budgets for your different departments right now.
Yeah, well, that, I mean.
Get that all rolled up together so that we compile all the numbers, we can see where we're at, right? So, uh, that's where I'd like to stand personally. And then we already discussed some of the other departments, Highway, I think it was, and some others about, you know, looking at the wage classification itself again. But that's just not my decision, I need a lot of the town officials in there as well to, you know, give their spin on things.
What did you say, Nancy pointed out, you probably need an article for this kind of salary increase. I don't think that has happened with other salary.
No, we haven't even really discussed individual articles yet. Uh, but we will have to compile a lot of data together, put a proposal, put an article for it, so.
We did give an article to Priscilla.
Yes, I should have given it to her. We, we haven't even entertained discussing any articles, cause right now I gotta look for you. Everybody in this brother wants everything in it.
So can I just ask, I'm, I'm getting a little nervous, Priscilla's new here. We have a fun thing here, we need to get the ball going, we need to get things going.
Totally, I got for a month.
I mean, I'm a little nervous, cause we're new here, you know, she's new and I don't want her to be sitting in a situation where we don't have the articles put together, we need to really get going.
I can't push for the articles on the floor, I guarantee that right now, so. We need to get together, whittle some of these down, right? So, uh, we have to get through these initial budget meetings to say, okay, where are your expenses, expenses gonna be? Then we can get together, talk about the articles and the conversations.
Now, Nancy, do you have to go through this thing? Get the okay to have the meeting like we did when we were in the middle of the whole COVID thing? Or is it pretty much we can pick a date and nobody has an issue with it?
Well, the date, the date now is set for May eleventh.
Right, the following week after the election, right? That's, that's the date for our town meeting.
That's the date for our town meeting.
So obviously, again, we end up having to, are we gonna do the chair thing then?
We'll have to do the same thing with the house.
So that has to be, that ball has to start moving.
Right, right.
And then it's up to this board to get first, like John says, we try to get all the basic budgets out of the way. Then we will have everybody come back in, sit there and present the articles. But that salary piece will have to be in our.
But that al, but that also has to go into our budget. Right, I mean, if we, it's better.
Well, like you say, you know, right now it's in the budget, but it's not gonna prove, so.
Right.
Nothing for the dollar amount, you have to say, if this passes, right, this is the correct amount.
So am I supposed to change my budget then to, to fifty instead of forty-four? So we want to do that.
Well, well, no, I, I don't have a problem with you sitting there and, and you sit there and you say, change, see it pass.
If you have salary boos, you put them in your budget right now.
Yeah.
And we can talk about it. And, and we're talking about the salary piece of it, so. Don't try to hold it back and forget about it, right? Cause, you know, there's certain things in there like, you know, record access officer. We've had discussions about that. And I want it back under Nancy's office, right? We've talked about a person that may be given the hours for that position, but I can't just do it without it approved yet, so. Uh, you know, we have a plan, I, I gotta make sure that stuff's in there as well, you know? Uh, yeah, we wanna spend some money here, right? Gotta make sure it's in that department's budget or we'll spend it, right? So it's not, so it's not only, not only a discussion of cutting things back, it's also a discussion about what did we miss or what do we need to add in there? And get a full picture of where the, the spend's going to be, so.
Well, there's no fancy calisthenics in mind, other than the increase I'm looking for, um, just under two hundred bucks for Ron's salary line, just to meet the salary, the, the wage classification table. And then two hundred twenty-three bucks just to cover any pieces of the policies or whatever else. And that's it, I mean, that's.
So your raises that are in there right now, other than the, the non-annual type raises, are those, are those in your budgets?
The one that I, the one I requested for my salary, that is in my budget now, that, and then. And then Ron's is, uh, in here as well, that's.
That's a no brainer, because that, that just goes along with it. But, but yours, I would do what the state has all of my care. Or underpaid, you sit there and you put it as a concern, subject to, uh, because if it, if it slows on, on, on the town floor, which I don't see an issue, you wanna have it in your budget.
Right.
If it doesn't, then it's very easy to take it out of a budget then, just to put it in.
So I have, yeah, I have.
So put your request in the budget, if that didn't happen already.
You guys don't have our budget?
Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
When I say if you didn't put that in there?
I did put one.
Uh, give us, give an addendum into Priscilla so she can add it to your.
No, it, it, it's in mine anyway.
But, but I think what, what, what the board is saying is, we're not trying to spend any time or effort in this meeting to do that. That is something that we're gonna have to see.
As we have a lot to do still.
To see, because one, you should become individual, not as a group of three. You come up with your concerns, you come up with your concern.
You're talking about salaries?
Yes.
I thought with the elected officials, got them together, I thought that, but let me tell you, kind of went out there for last year, but I thought. I, I thought elected officials can't be better than that.
What, what it comes down to, Carrie, this is not the time or the place right now for discussion.
I'm not, no, I understand that, no, and so I'm.
That's what it comes down to, all we wanna do is make sure that your basic budget, and you have to, with that increase, I see it right here.
Good.
All, all up to whether even, e- even goes forward on the floor and what it's approved and this and that. All we're trying to do is, there is so much work to do before this meeting, as you know.
I don't know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing for my raise, I'm saying, so my budget, other than that, is two hundred bucks for Ron, and then another, like, just over two hundred bucks for any increase in the motion. That's it for my budget, that's all.
Now, that's a tax, tax.
I'm done.
What does the increase there to carry for seventy-one hundred?
What? Tax taking expenses, same as last year, it's four thousand dollars. Seventy-one hundred is the overall change in the whole.
Okay, I'm looking at the part.
So basically, your budget's relatively flat.
Yeah.
Except for to be quiet.
We can't talk about it.
Except for to be quiet, compensation.
Yeah.
That's all that's fair.
No, no, the required, the required compensation increase, compensation increase, that's wrong. The one hundred dollars, that's a required.
I apologize.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, but you said the required compensation increase, that is, that, that.
Well, it's already.
That's not my salary, that's, that's wrong.
Yes, it's a step increase.
Yes. Okay, Dawn?
I got no issue with it. Like you say, basically level funding, except the requirements that we have to, to meet our obligations.
That's pretty much why I always do my job, I'm like, yeah.
Yeah, but sometimes, I mean, there is some stuff that we put off a year. And we can't forget that, we put a lot of things in time. And we listen to, maybe crossing the war, I mean, presentation of, must have been more time to, to pace, uh, these tax regulations. Actually, it's, it's, it's more beneficial for the town to continue down that road. Board a lot of it. But both of the looking up, uh, that's the bank here, we have to keep our eyes open and look for these opportunities. And if they look like they'll, they'll pan out, I think, so out the floor, uh, yeah. It's time we need it, we're still working on twenty-year ago technology. We need to come up in the future, I mean, we've been trying to do it the best we can this year with the limited budget we have, right? We're trying to get laptops and stuff that people could, you know, they could work from home, you know? Be more mobile and stuff like that, so. It's stuff that, you know, we were forced to do it this year, but it probably would have been wiser for us to do it at an earlier point in time. I personally would rather work on a desktop than a laptop. That's my choice, but at times I have to work off a laptop to do my job, so, for what? It supports me. Oh, yeah, so if you do have to, if you think of something that maybe you didn't put on there, cause they wanna, you know, go up too high in your budget, it's really a dear department, we need to know about it, because if we can't do it this year, we need to be thinking about it for next year. You know, it's, it's not gonna go away.
Right.
It's only gonna get worse, so.
I don't have.
We're gonna address it.
I don't have any fires that you put out or everything, everything is pretty good.
So I'm gonna make sure that.
Yeah.
You don't say that. I don't have any fires to put out, yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I don't leave it up to superstitions.
Yeah, let's get the numbers together, we'll look at that, we'll see what those numbers boil out to, figure out, you know, basically how that might affect our tax rates, you know? I think our tax rate's pretty darn good right now, you know? Will it be that way a year from now? I don't know, I don't know how the government's gonna handle all these expenses that they've had and where they're gonna recoup that money from, that's the government somewhere, right?
They're gonna take it from our kids and our grandkids.
Yeah, this, the bottom line is, but, I mean, we can make, make life easier for the state, take care of some of the services.
Yeah.
So, you know, we have to look at, yeah. Can't stick our head in the sand.
Am I? I, I, I'm.
No, 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 we can't, we're, we're talking. We can't stick our head in the sand and say, this isn't happening. And the potentials act, that's, potentials aren't that, I mean. Go fine, it could get worse, I don't know right now. But, you know, they can't stop us from trying to move it further.
Right. So that's, um, that's mine.
I got no issue with it, Carrie.
Neither do I.
Nothing really controversial.
So what we'll be doing later on is we'll be having a meeting with all the departments for their budgets. Whether you show up to that meeting or not, is basically whether you want, need to support it or deny anything on your, on your budget, you know? We'll get through that point, we'll roll all the numbers together, we'll look at what we have for a spend. And then we'll say, okay, can we do something with the wage classification shift, put an article? Can we do something for the elected officials as far as, you know, their compensation goes? And until we get those numbers, we can't say what those numbers are, right? But at least we'll go in with a good idea, uh, this is where we're gonna spend, right? This is where we're gonna get out of it, and this is where it's gonna boil down to cost of tax pay. There is a lot of areas we neglected over the years, we just think we need to pay a little bit closer attention.
Okay.
It's not all doing it well.
Oh, no.
Look at where the markets were going for last week.
We're going back to what? Okay.
It's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Nancy.
Thanks.
I thought you actually went down, only because I don't have reelections this year, four elections. But I did, I did put in fifteen thousand for just one election this year, May, and that's because the town meeting, we're gonna have to mend things to get, just like we did last year, so.
So what they crosswalked, not the last year.
Right, right, so that way I won't be coming back to Rascal for more money.
So this is for chair rental and.
The pool cover and all of that, yes, well, yes, yes.
Understood.
And I put in, um, my assistant has a step increase, I put that in, I put it out, increase in her hours, and then an increase in my salary, and I'm still lower than last year.
Did you put in what we discussed earlier this year about potentially moving the area out of the office?
I did not, cause I don't know what your intention is.
That's the intention, you wanna move in your office.
I wanna move into your office, I wanna give your office the ability to do the job properly, right? And I need that person compensated, so. I'm looking at making it a benefited position.
Yes.
Uh, and additional hours and make sure we, rate up in such a way that that person can actually work in other offices as well, uh, all that needed, you know? If we need to shift some hours, like right now, Priscilla's struggling right now with Becky gone. It would be nice if she had another administrator from another department to come in and help her, but, right now, we can't do that, so we'd have to classify the job as such that.
You would have to rethink that, I mean, you can't just take people to, you know, pay wise. I mean, how it works at, it would work, you need, say, thirty hours a week and for you, five hours a week? You have to determine that ahead of time, what the hours.
There's a lot more discussion that has to go forward.
Right.
That was something I was throwing out there, but there's really been no conversations.
Right, right.
Cause I've had a conversation with the everybody and this and that.
Right.
And we haven't forgotten, it's still like to continue to dialogue.
Okay, yeah.
If there's a way we can approach that, that would cover all of these. I don't wanna say, okay, we'll put forty hours in this department. I don't wanna say, okay, we'll put forty hours in this department and then not utilize it. Those forty hours, or thirty of it, is expended in.
Well, I'm asking for more hours because my workload has increased three times as much. Now, anytime somebody goes to the registry and motor vehicles, they go to unemployment, if they go to any state agency, they're automatically registered to vote, automatically, so that means I get a list every day of about thirty-five to fifty people. Even kids that are sixteen years old, they go into a pre-register queue, but I have to process those people every single day and go through. So that's more of a workload. Elections, we now have to do mail-in ballots for all elections going forward, that's a lot more work. And then also talking about early voting in person for every election going forward, there's so many more there. So there's a lot more work in the office itself that wasn't there even a year ago, well, prior to COVID. There's a lot more work. They rolled it out January first of last year with the automatic voter, voter registration, and that's been an enormous amount of work, because even if you go to the registry and you're already registered, you're still going into that pending queue, and I still have to address it to see, okay, he's already registered, so I don't have to worry about it, but I've been threatened a lot by the people, a lot of new people in town. I've gotten a lot. The other problem is I don't have mailing addresses, so I can't just register them without their mailing address, so I have a lot of research that I have to do. To try to find your PO box before I can even register them, so that their paperwork is complete. So I work with Kerry and Mark, and I work with these nurses, I work with Nicole, I try to get them. I work at Heritage Village, you know, the path up there, just try to get it, so. Everybody works with me, it's just a lot more work behind the scenes that wasn't there even a year ago.
And I understand that, and that's why I started the conversation a couple of months ago, you said, I, I know what you're dealing with, because we deal, every office in this building deals with this.
Right.
The workload has just. Especially during COVID, it, it's, everything is twice as difficult.
Right.
It's twice as hard.
Bad enough during COVID, right, because there are certain conditions of COVID, but then again, there's the government mandated stuff that, you know, they're adding on all these costs to the towns, a town has to go up the way or accommodate it, and that's not always fair.
Right.
You should know by now, that's how the state, they love the mandate, they don't like to fund it.
Same thing after another time, right? They want all these programs, but they don't wanna fund it.
Right.
Right.
And you don't have a choice to opt out.
Right, but the real IDs are out there now, the real ID. Nine out of ten people do not have a copy of their birth certificate yet. And God forbid if you had divorce, you have to come back to me for marriage license, so I'm doing those so much more frequently now than I ever did them before, just since the real ID came out.
That's gonna increase on you, because we just sent out a mandate that they have to have all, all real IDs by October thirty-first, where they're not gonna be able to get into federal buildings, federal property.
Right.
Any of those places. So you're gonna need a federal ID, a real ID to be able to do any of that.
Right.
So basically, a regular Massachusetts driver's license is gonna be useless, unless that's all you want it for.
So the workload is definitely increasing, just trying to justify why I need more hours in the office. And I will still continue to use two to four seniors every year through the senior program, when that gets up and running again, I have so much filing, because all the paperwork and processing has to get filed.
Now, have you thought about making Laurie a full-time employee?
That's what's on my budget.
So that's gonna make her full-time?
Yes. Yes.
That deserves a full-time benefit. It deserves it.
But, oh, it's more hours for full-time, it's also a benefited position. I used to have a full-time benefited position in my office until the woman retired, and then they capped my hours. And I have to be able to recoup that, and I never asked for it, but now I'm to the point I need it, I need it to keep the office running effectively and efficiently.
What's different today than it was even a year ago?
Right, right, it is, it is, and Laurie does a great job.
She does.
She does an outstanding job, runs a little bit of a bit, she does a good job.
I mean, the decisions ultimately are yours, not your office.
Right.
So I, I don't have a concern with, with letting press.
Okay.
I think that's more conversation. Finalize it and get, get us going in the right direction. I think board understands your concerns, and like I said, that's why, you know, I started the coffee a couple of months ago to say, I, I know there's gonna be changes, we have to look to Seattle when I adjust.
Right.
But I, actually, you know, like you say, I, I have, I have no issues with you, but. I do have to have a few more questions discussed, but, uh, no, I'm not gonna be careful with this.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks.
I have two parts to my budget, one is my office budget, which I'll go first. The only increase I have is the salary.
Take the laptop, cover a little fold so the camera can see you. There you go.
So I was not talking about my salary, so all the other items I do not have an increase for. I kept it level funded, I think I'll be okay. With that, I think between the categories and the areas, I have not drawn in any notification or increase announcement for payroll, that's the only one that I'm bit concerned about. Is I'm not sure how much payroll may or may not go up next year for a payroll better. So that may throw a little bit of a loop in there, but I should have a little bit of a buffer.
Did you plan something?
Uh, I, I did not plan anything because I had a little bit of a buffer, and I am on track this year.
What are any of you looking at here?
Um, that is the treasurer's expense for ninety-four hundred.
Okay.
So right now, I think I'm gonna be running really close to that, about ninety-three hundred, but it also depends on how many W twos we have, so how much turnover are we gonna have, because every person is a W two. A lot of my big expenses come from both my ACA reporting and my W two reporting, was my big variable in payroll, so without an increase, I should be okay, but if we have a lot of turnover, and a high volume of W twos, then I might run over a couple, I'd be asking for transfer.
Because basically, your, your budget stays the same, except the only increases we can really count on, every year insurance goes up.
That's the next part of my budget, yeah.
The board understands that, that, that I would rather have a little bit more money in that line to cover it. If you don't spend it, it goes back into the general fund, as opposed to coming and saying, hey, I need a rack, or I'm gonna be short for this year.
If there's numbers that we're not aware, that we know are gonna go up, whatever, right, let's plan for the increase, even if it's a little bit extra. Because the money that isn't spent will go back into the general fund anyway. And I think people are understanding enough to understand that there's certain numbers we just can't wrap our whole hands around, so we have to, you know, we don't wanna pad the total budget, right, there's certain areas within the budget that we don't have a crystal ball right now, so your W twos and that kind of stuff, that you don't know where that's gonna end up right now. I would plan for what you consider the, the real situation, the guys with the numbers out in front of you right now. So at least we go forward, and we say, okay, we know this is gonna go up, we don't know how much yet, but we'll put money in there to cover it, so there's no surprises later on.
Yeah, I, I try to make sure to cover it, but you never know, you know, and I don't want to increase my budget too much for no reason. You know, I like to keep a flat budget if I can, and I don't wanna increase it without, you know, reason behind it, so.
But if you have a reason, and you think it's gonna go at one percent, then like, what is it, what is it? Just cover your tracks. So, so the board can look at and say, okay, besides, you know, compensation increases regarding your salaries and that. Basically, we know how much money Dawn needs for next year. That's what the board's intention is, that's how starting. It's just here like John says, you know, as long, as you know better than anybody here, Dawn, X amount of money comes in, which means only X amount of money can go up, nobody understands that better than you. But we're just trying to get the basic foundation of, okay, you know, Dawn needs one million, one hundred eighty, that's what the number we're looking at right now.
And it's one thousand, that's not one thousand.
Money has to go to Dawn, X amount of money to carry.
Well, too, I mean, you look at all the insurance holidays this year and stuff, periods of time where our insurance costs may not be what they were a year ago, because we've gotten some relief because of COVID over there. Doesn't mean they're not gonna be there next year, right, so. I mean, even though we're watching the budget, they say, oh, my expenses, insurance is quite as bad because of the holidays I've gotten through you know, six to nine months, those I could, probably won't be there next year, so, I mean, it's, yeah, this is a one-time decrease, right, because of hardships and stuff that the government's preparing for. Uh, but they're not gonna go, they're, they're back next year, so you can't lose track of where your expenses are. Those are the normal expenses, you know, thank you for giving us the relief, appreciate it. Well needed right now, so, but, doesn't mean it's not gonna be there next year, so. We just gotta plan for that. If there are stuff in there that you can't quite calculate, add a little, a little bit on the higher side, and make sure that we're covering, so we're not looking, you know, a year from now, where we're gonna get this money from. You know, because we spent all our free cash and everything else, and we don't have anything reserved, and so. Let's make sure that we can still continue operating forward.
Um, so the next part of my budget is the employment test. So I, I'll go line by line for you on that. The county retirement assessment is going up sixty thousand dollars, that is heavily divided with the county regional retirement system. That is not something that we have any control over in that aspect, it's an actuarial calculation and an assessment given to us, so that is the known class. That does include a reduction if we pay it on July first, I believe it's.
Does it, you get a nice little discount?
You get a discount, and I have it in here, as far as the percentage is.
Why actually, would you say that's the way to go?
I've done that every year since I started.
And that's the only question I have.
Yep.
Simple enough.
We have the cash, we have the cash to do it, so the only reason you wanna do it is if you don't have the cash ability to do so. We have the cash ability, it's a one point eight one percent reduction. So if we have the cash to do it, absolutely, I pay it on day one, so that's why I put it in my budget, so.
Saves us money, yeah.
Well, for it, Dawn, that's what I've done, it's been, it's just makes good business.
It is, it's good business sense to do. The next is Medicare. That is a little, little bit more, it's based on one point four five percent of my projected salaries. The tough part about this is I don't know what my salary is gonna be, I wasn't aware of any salary increases from any departments, so that might change based on our overall budget, so we'll probably need to recalculate that once you put the whole budget through. I did do slight salary increases to come up with that increase, but the percentage is one point four five percent of salaries.
Contractually obligated anyway, based on our.
Yep.
Pay skills, right, so. I'm not saying those pay skills are right, but it is a starting point, at least we have to accommodate that. I don't have all the answers right now, I'm not too keen on the way we do it here in town, but I also know it's a municipal government. We need some kind of structure, but whether the structure we currently sit in is the correct structure or not. We're having trouble filling positions and stuff like that, because that pays, you know, isn't adding. I'm not saying that everybody's in the same situation, but I think it's enough employees, town employees to say, we gotta get our head a-shaking.
So I increased the payroll eight percent over this year's budget. I know that there's gonna be new positions, I know that there's going to be increases, but those are likely that I don't know, but that is what the increase was, that I calculated, was eight percent, assuming new positions.
How difficult would it be to reveal all that, if we have to?
That figure?
Yeah, so, so we do come up with a number.
No, no, I have a recalculation, so I just put the new salary budget in there, I'm gonna remember, so, yeah, not, not wrong. Medical insurance, I assumed a four and a half percent increase, I believe. I do not have the rates from Maya, I will have them next week, I hope, as I have a meeting with her. Their assumption is, um, I think it was between two and eight percent is the percent that Maya gave me. So anywhere between there could be our rate increases, or it could be an outlier. But I, the overall medical insurance increased four and a half percent, and I assumed three new enrollments during the year. Just because I talked to the police department, they weren't sure as far as the police form, if any of their part-time or someone needs to go to full-time and how that's gonna be allotted, so.
It's already happened, so.
I figured it's better to add the enrollments in, so there's.
Highly, yes, a couple as well, right, you have Pitt retiring, and who's that, they retired, it's possible. Ed.
We also have Kathy Zug retiring, so we're gonna have to fill that position too.
Yeah, so we have some people.
So we have potential for that medical to go up with enrollings, even with the positions that we have now, enrollings may increase. The dental insurance is pretty much the same, we are with Quavo, and we already know that there's no rate increase for this year. Health insurance retirees, we were just talking about retirees, so I did increase the budget because I know a couple of new retirees are coming on, we've had a couple of this, a couple of retirees this year, so I included them in there as well. I do know that through the end of this calendar year, the medics have a zero percent increase, but that until about Octoberish, if there's any increase, but I can tell you that the last three years, there was no increase. Hopefully we stay on that theme. And those are all through Maya, we go through Maya for the rates, through the hospital shield.
Excuse me, people, I have to go to.
The life insurance.
Do you want us to continue, or do you want us to wait, Mike?
No, you go right ahead.
Life insurance, I increased minimally, that's not a huge expense line on. I increased it by two enrollments, assuming two positions, new physicians, not replacement physicians.
Addition.
Addition. Unemployment. I am asking, typically, we put six thousand dollars into the unemployment trust fund. This year, our expenses have way exceeded the six thousand that we typically put in. Luckily, we do have enough in the trust to cover those expenses, because we're a reimbursable employer, which means that as unemployment claims come up, we pay for them, we don't pay into them on a payroll basis. So this year with COVID, we've had a lot of unemployment claims that have come through, and I'm dealing with them the best I can through unemployment, but our claims are higher than the six thousand, I think it would be wise for us to replenish that unemployment fund at least by ten thousand this year through the budget.
We're closer to the line. Appreciate it.
The next item is debt retirement. That is just the debt that we have. There's two sewer loans on the year, which we split fifty-fifty with the sewer department. We pay half of the debt, the town and the store. And then there's the highway barn, and those are all contractual, obviously, provision debt. I believe I have a article that's put forth for the ban that we have to pay down some on the ban, I believe I submitted that article quite some time ago. But that doesn't go to my budget, that's typically been a article, because it's case by case, but we can do that year, because that's not contractual for the bans, but I'd like to pay down if we can. We're, we're close to paying that one off. We're, we're close to paying that one off.
How many do we have out there right now, Don?
So we have three loans, well, four, including the ban with the short terms, we have three long-term and then the ban, which is short-term, um, I don't have a point of it or my total debt right now. Um, but it's just the highway barn.
We get to talk about articles and additional spending here, maybe we should take a look at that as well, see what we have right now.
So included in my annual report is the debt schedule, and it's a five-year projection, so it's two years back, two years forward, and this year. So it'll be in there with our balances and our contractual obligations per year.
Okay.
With pencil and interest.
So besides, besides the highway barn, what's, what's the other two?
Um, the other two long-term are the sewer debt that we have on South Street.
Yeah.
And those are the two that are split, um, with the sewer department, so we pay fifty percent, they pay thirty percent. So that's the only debt aside from the ban.
How many more years on highway?
On the top of my head, I don't know, do you have the annual report for the loan?
That was a twenty-year loan, correct?
That was a forty, thirty-eight-year loan.
Really?
I believe it was thirty-eight years. All these are USVA loans and they're long-term debts, so we do have quite a bit of time left on those three. I don't wanna misspeak, but I know that they were, um, either forty or thirty-eight year.
I don't know why I, I have the figure of twenty. Obviously, it starts twenty years.
I was gonna say, because if I was looking at that, I said, we're gonna be getting, close to getting to paying that one up, but obviously.
No, the highway barn, we actually have quite a bit of debt left on, um, for the barn, and like I said, it's on my debt schedule, I don't have it on the top of my head, but it's in my annual report.
I, I was just curious.
And on the debt schedule.
Something we'll have to look at when we talk about potential articles on the floor and stuff like that, if we have to go after borrowing or something like short-term, whatever to take care of something we immediately need in town. Uh, I think we need to understand that at the same time, so just be prepared and talk a little bit about when we get to the article portion, and we start talking the total spend of the town, so where are the, where's the funding at?
Hmm.
Right, and that is one option, right, not one of the best options, but maybe an option that needs to be exercised.
It's, it's always an option, we just have to be very careful, probably lever, leverage our option, we're highly rated town right now. We wanna make sure that we stay that way.
Yes.
And that the debt that we take on is, um, definitely for the needs of the town.
Just so you know, we have less than thirty seconds left on our Zoom here.
It shut down again there?
It's gonna shut down again, so I could restart again.
They ramp up in thirty seconds?
Short-term debt, that is contractual, that is our ban interest, uh, we're contractually obligated to pay that, so that is that. And that's it, our betterment trust, the debt went away a couple of years ago when I paid that off, when the betterment income, uh, had paid down.
Hmm, cool.
So.
On that note, we probably won't be restarting the Zoom meeting, so you know, um, I know you're on the Ellen, and I think this is it, we're just gonna close.